...of people that have been with us for so long. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read the list of those who have our people who are coming, and then I'll go back around and make sure we've got everybody. And for those of you when your name is called, they can come up and get to shake hands, and we have a little burning gift for you as well. Alright? Alright, so you ready? Okay. Richard Antonios, custodian who has been with us since 1985.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
I might need your post to go. Uh, now I just have to say this higher. Okay. Yeah, okay. You wanna be my hand? Okay.
Kidding, so we can do that. We'll have to.
Great. We'll let the math guy do the numbers. Marilyn Brennan, teacher at Haystown who's been with us for 26 years. Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Maria Sefloni, who's been with us as a Kitchener team member since January High School since 2003. Next, we have Marie Dennis, a teacher at KSI who's been with us for 34 years.
Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations.
Next, we have Janet DePaul, teacher who's been at KSI with us for 34 years. Next, Nancy DiPerio, a special ed teacher at January High School, 27 years. Pamela Jubek, Rockview Middle School, a math teacher. Next on the list, Dr. Bill Glass, 20 years. Next, we have Jean Hayer, who's been a paraprofessional with us for 31 years. Next, with 13 years of service, Rogers Park Middle School's own principal, Pat J. Next is one of our physical therapists, Martha Logerato, 13 years. Next, we have the one who's kept the buses running on time, with 29 years, Melanie Lucas. Alright. Coming most recently from Ellsworth Schools, who taught kindergarten, Michelle Massie, with 19 years. The next one I give you is our most tenured, longest-serving, with 38 years, Deb Petrusnolan. Alright. Next is the person who served as the director of reading and language arts for KH, Chris Crust, with 26 years. Next, we have another one of our custodian ranks, with 35 years of service, Melvin Sprague. Alright. Actually, I think that Hattie Swanson, with 42 years. Next, we have a teacher from Parkview with 34 years with us, Jose Vasco. And, um, next, we have somebody who's been keeping kids active, not me, for 42 years, Mary Nymer. Now, I hope I didn't miss anybody that is here. Is there anybody here that I didn't see come in, or you got everybody? Alright, there's a few others, you can read them on the recognitions list. There's a few who aren't here tonight, and we just.
Sign them up to be subs?
Yes. Yes. The staff will meet you later. But that's our list, so we're glad to.
Public participation.
If you all would like to leave, it's fine, we can stay a while, whatever you want. Enjoy the evening.
So, um, with the public participation, we have three minutes allowed of reading speaker. We have the same rules that we put out last time, everybody, they put out these 30-minute acts for that, and if everybody could just have to quorum, we're not containing anybody's content of what they speak. And the first person on the list, should be the only person on the list, if it's Greg Ziani.
Congratulations to all your retirees, great job. I just got a quick thing, is I'd like to ask the board, from Dr. Sal Hall, Special Needs Program, is I think, in a child's foster church, is we put cameras in the kids' classrooms? Because, I can tell you, we've seen, and everybody knows what's going on with this special education going on thing, and my son came home two days ago with a note saying he threw himself on the floor. I don't, he doesn't. But, how do I know after this whole situation that's going on, that there isn't something more to this than to know that he threw himself on the floor? I don't know no more. And to be honest, I don't trust him no more. And I'm sorry to say that, but that's how I feel. So, with that is why I'm asking, it would solve a lot of problems, especially with children that don't, can't come home and say, "Mom, Dad, this happened." You know what I mean? That's where the scary part is for a parent. Know that your son or daughter comes home and they can't tell you why they got a bruise on their knee. How did you get that? How did you toenail that broken? Well, you finger nailed it, they can't tell you that. So, as a parent, it is the hardest thing in the world to get a note sent to you and say, "Your child has threw himself on the floor, that's why he's got a big bruise on his knee." I don't know that, but if I did have a question, and I could say to whoever's running the principal and say, "Can you just please check the video and see if that really went out?" And she can't. And I think that would solve a lot of this animosity between everybody accusing everybody of doing something that did or didn't happen, I don't know. But I really would like you guys to please think about that, because I think it's the smartest thing for special, for the children. The kids are the ones who need, because they can't speak, some of them. They can't come home and tell you if somebody hurt them. And I think this would rectify a lot of, if somebody, someone's child comes home and they got a big bruise, and you could go and look in the classroom and see the video, and just say, "Well, we got it on, we got Mr. Sandy, we have it on video that your son did throw himself on the floor, if you'd like to come down and look at it, we'll show it to you, but this is what happened." Fine, wouldn't, you know, but for, to have no, I guess I'd do say, no one can tell me when he comes home, how his day was, like I said, I get a note, threw himself on the floor, that's why his knee's cut. Okay, I appreciate that, he did that, but after all what's been happening here, it's very hard to trust anyone. I think it would be a great, great investment for the school, because it would, I think it would cut a lot of tensions between everyone. I really do. I think it would keep everyone honest, and if a teacher didn't want that camera, then obviously that teacher doesn't need to teach a special needs children. That's my opinion. And I hope that you guys could please, please think about that, and from the bottom of your hearts, as a, as a parent that has a son that cannot speak, telling anything how his day was, it's really, really painful to hear, "Oh, no, he threw himself on the floor." Okay, what, what man threw himself on the floor? Did someone grab him, someone kick him? I have no idea. I have, and so that's where I think that the school board needs to look into, some kind of protection for the, the kids that can't protect themselves. You know, we rely on people that, every day I rely on, I rely on somebody, every day, somewhere along the line, you rely on somebody. And I would like to rely on a video camera stating that, "Listen, Mr. Sandy, you're 100% wrong, this is what happened, you're in black and white, you come to camera." Or, "Mr. Sandy, we do have an issue, we're gonna, let's take care of it." And I think that's what needs to happen now. I, I, it's sad to say, but it seems cameras need to be everywhere, they're on police officers now. I think, especially for non-verbal students, it should be in their classrooms. So, with that, I really hope and pray that you guys would think it, like I said, from the bottom of your hearts, and to think about the children that can't stick up to themselves. That's, that's the biggest thing. And thank you guys for hearing me, and I'll give you, let's pass things around, I appreciate it. Thanks for listening.
Okay, that was the only person on the list. Is there anybody else who would like to speak that wasn't on the list? Anybody? Anybody? Okay, thank you. The Board of Education approves the items on the consent calendar exhibits 18-81 through 18-83 as recommended. I have a motion by Mr. Santos, second by Mr. Holling. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Same? Motion carries. Yeah. Okay, sure. So, consent calendar, item B, donation, Ridgefield Scott Elementary School, donation to Pembroke Elementary School. Okay, play, play. Oh, Scott, is there somebody in presentation? Okay.
They're gonna be talking with Pembroke, Pembroke's gonna be making a presentation.
Yes.
They're gonna be a part of our presentation.
Oh, okay, yes.
If we could go in that specific order, we'd appreciate it, thank you so much.
Oh, perfect, so, alright, so we're gonna have Pembroke Elementary School do their presentation, along with the Ridgefield Scott Elementary School donation.
Great, thank you.
No problem. We have our top, we have our top IT guy.
You know, it's a long night for you guys, so it's a little tough.
Everyone else here was so, just all like, really long arms, and there we go. Jesus, and we longer arms, and stuff, the wheels on the bus. Karen Park.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Dr. Bull, the principal at Pembroke, thank you for having us tonight. We know that you are, as we are, at the end of the school year, and probably looking for a little uplifting presentation. So, we brought two of our PUNIS students with us, and several of our best-looking staff members, to present to you. Mr. Lambo, grade one teacher, and our school governance council chairperson, Ms. Viviana, our fifth grade special education teacher, and she was pulled on to school governance council this year. And Ms. Apollonis, fourth grade teacher, she's also on school governance council. And we also have other teachers out here, Mrs. Michael, Mrs. Stafford, Mrs. Daley, Miss College. And then, of course, we brought Ben Miller and Ziarra Duran to present this evening. We have new and fun initiatives to share with you. Mr. Lambo?
Alright, good evening, everybody. So, I'm gonna talk about flexible seating, and myself, and a few other teachers within the school, brought it to Pembroke Elementary School. Trials, and trial and error process, but now that we got the swing of things, it's working out tremendous. Three things I like best about flexible seating in the classroom is, it gives students a choice, letting them become an advocate for themselves and their learning, creates an open community, which promotes communication and collaboration. And it also allows students to appropriately fidget, which increases blood flow, blood flowing brain, which promotes learning. So, we have Ben Miller and Ms. Ziarra over here, I'm just gonna ask Ms. Ziarra a few questions, and then we'll turn it over to Ben. So, Ms. Ziarra? Nice laugh, okay?
Are you mic up?
Alright, so, what types of seating do we have in our classroom?
Bouncy balls, lolly stools, high stools.
High stools, okay. What's your favorite type of seating on classroom? Your favorite one to use?
Bouncy balls.
Why do you like bouncy balls?
Because they help me learn, learn about friendship.
They help you learn about friendship, alright. And how does flexible, okay, ready? How does flexible seating help you learn with your friends?
Because they're nice to me.
And they're nice to you, and the seating helps you, is it easy to talk to them once you have the seating around in the classroom?
Yes.
As tables or chairs, would you like that? I need, I'm sorry. Desks or tables?
Tables.
Tables, alright. And we'll turn it over to Ben Miller.
Let's see. The reason I'm here today, well, we are here today, is to inform you about flexible seating and some of its benefits. In class, we do the same things as every other class, except we have different seating. The seating helps students focus better, and 15 out of 20 students say that flexible seating lets them relax and learn at the same time. In fact, a student in fourth grade in my class named Dayton was interviewed, and he said that seating, that flexible seating puts him in an environment that helps him complete his work without being bored or distracted. According to the survey, most kids think the same. But if kids don't feel comfortable, then they can use desks. In fact, two students use desks almost every day, and they say that it helps them learn. Also, if kids use flexible seating the wrong way, their name gets put on a chart, and they have to wait five days until they can use flexible seating again. This usually doesn't happen, though, because students are encouraged to pick a seat that helps them learn, not a seat that their friends are at. You might think that with all those seats on the floors, it would be hard to find a way to store notebooks, but we use baskets that we carry to, to the seat we are at. You also might think that it would cost a lot of money to get all the seating, but some families donated chairs, like foldable ones. Those are the reasons why we think flexible seating is a good project for classrooms. We hope you enjoyed our presentation.
Here is a message from all of the fourth graders in Ms. Apollonis's class.
We love flexible seating!
Can the board borrow those, too?
We have a couch. There's something to be said for them, for sure. Okay. Does Ziarra need to go to bed? Okay, you guys are heading in. Alright, other school governance council projects that we've taken underway this year, Mr. Lambo, did you wanna mention these?
Alright, so we, um, our outdoor classroom takes place now in our courtyard. We had tremendous support from the Pembroke community, and also the family and staff at Pembroke Elementary School. And with that funding and support, we were able to secure a whiteboard, numerous picnic tables, and benches that would be situated throughout the, throughout our courtyard. And the nice thing about that is, it allows students the opportunity to get up and experience learning in a different environment than over the age of 10. So, very fortunate, we have everything out there, and the experience, we got it right there. And, you know, next year, we're looking to use it around, so, very excited about that.
The school governance council is made up of parents, teachers, and community members with the common goal of improving our school inside and out, one project at a time. The school governance council wants to build a new accessible playground at Pembroke, because we have a very large population of students with special needs. This year, we had 89. We are starting next year with 107. This playground project will cost us $150,000 to implement. Our students with special needs are integrated into a schedule mixed with typical students of all day long. This means that all of the special education teachers, our regular education teachers... This means that all of the special education teachers, our regular education teachers, special area teachers, tutors, and PPS staff are working together under the guidance of Dr. Apple to help all students succeed at Pembroke. We are affiliates working together. This unique model of special education under the guidance of Calitutius not only helps our students with special needs and helps them flourish socially and academically, but it also teaches our typical students empathy, kindness, acceptance, and acceptance for others who are different from them. Some of our students have difficulty navigating our current playground. It simply is not okay. A new accessible playground would show all of our students, will ensure all of our students enjoy access together. Currently, there is no fully accessible playground within the city of Danbury, and we are hopeful the city of Danbury will support the Pembroke Playground Project. Now, our Pembroke, the Pembroke Playground has a website, called www.danberkeleyground.com. Write it down. It has a website showing all of this information that I just said and then some. It tells you our fundraising initiatives. There's a PayPal link, if anybody feels generous tonight and make a donation. We also have a GoFundMe account. The Danbury High School Athletic Department is getting behind us. They are going to support our project with their athletes. Their first home football game is September 7th, it's youth night. They're gonna let us have donation bins at all the entrances, a raffle tent. They've fundraised this project with us, so we're hoping that connection will certainly help our initiative. We also have our thinking outside of the box. One of our parents owns a tattoo parlor in town, and he is going to be doing a special tattoo fundraiser for Great Day World Proceeds going toward Great Playground. We are hoping that the city of Danbury, if anybody has connections, they can certainly help us out as well. We have local businesses that have already started to donate. We have many friends and family members of Pembroke that have already made generous donations without us even starting to harass them yet. There's choirs all around town, and the best part of it all is that we have friends that are out of town that are here tonight and want to make a quick presentation and give us a very generous donation to help start off our initiative. If we can invite our Richfield students to stand and just give a brief statement.
Hello and good evening. I am Merrick Neri.
And I am Alex Vicki.
And we, above Owen Edison, Caroline Baker, and Trevor Chagnapi, are some of the fifth-grade student council representatives from Scotland Elementary School in Richfield, Connecticut.
This year, our student council raised money to repair portions of our playground, and when we learned what Pembroke was trying to do, we wanted to help. We know firsthand how essential it is to have a break from school for exercise and fun. We couldn't imagine having a school without accessible playground that we could use every day. The Scotland School Pay Forward Committee wants to help the Pembroke students by donating $1,000 to your efforts. All students deserve to help.
Scotland values all children. All children of any level of need should have a prime exercise break from learning. According to the American Heart Association, studies have shown that research reduces the likelihood of child obesity. It has also been linked to an improvement in a student's ability to focus during learning time. And we all agree it's key to learning social skills. So why should play or a lack of accessible equipment prevent all kids from getting these great opportunities?
Just to make some connections for everyone, may or may not know, Mrs. Pasarella is a Pembroke parent. See if you're on her lap. This is Michael, second grade class, and he's under her guidance and leadership from the student council and the Pay Forward Committee here. We are just so incredibly blessed and so incredibly touched by the generosity. What a life lesson, guys.
Thank you to the parents that drove them up here this evening. We know how hard it is. Thank you.
Big smile.
Thank you, bitch.
When'd you last stay at school, guys? When'd you last stay at school? What do you think about that?
They officially graduated. They're done.
Thank you all so much.
It's kind of hard to follow that out. We just won last bit of good news. Our last fun initiative this year, we unveiled our new mascot. Would like you to meet the Pembroke Panther Flash. Local artist, Mr. Rob Lee, drew him up several iterations of him. We solicited suggestions for his name, narrowed it down, and had a school-wide vote. Now we've got a face to put to Pembroke, and you can see him on all sorts of places, and walls, and banners, and t-shirts. Thank you so much for your attention.
Okay, and we have student representatives.
Being that this is our last meeting, we'd like to introduce our new 2018-2019 VOG officers. But first, we just wanted to thank you all for this opportunity. Sam and I have been coming to these meetings for the past two years, and we all just... And it's just been a pleasure being able to represent Danbury High School and now being able to call ourselves graduates, even though it doesn't feel like it just yet. And another thank you to all of you for coming to graduation and handing me my diploma. We also thought you might be interested in what our plans are for next year, so I'll be attending the University of Pennsylvania as a nursing major.
I'll be attending the University of Connecticut as a history major.
I'll also be attending the University of Connecticut as a studio art and business major.
I'll be attending Georgia Mason University as a criminal justice major.
And now we'll have our new VOG officers. First order of business to be to introduce themselves and their positions and give DHS's last update for the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. We're the new VOG officers. I'm Gabrielle Spillio. I'm the secretary.
I'm Joanna Wachul. I'm the treasurer.
I'm Alicia Madusha. I'm the vice president.
I'm Jazza Torres. I'm the president.
This year's graduation was a success. Each student walked in identical, gender-neutral, blue and white gowns. The highest percentage of students with a 4.0 GPA graduated in this graduating class. And we ran out of gold, we didn't even run out of the gold cords that we had to give them. It was an extremely successful graduating class, and they'll represent Danbury High School by attending many prestigious colleges like Yale, Cornell, and the University of Pennsylvania.
The day before graduation, there was a senior barbecue that was also a success. There were many exciting activities for the kids, like the play balls and the dunking. There was also a raffle, and the students were awarded different gift baskets for college and gift cards. And also the senior awards and scholarships were, it was the most money awarded this year, as there were a large amount of students qualified for all of these scholarships and awards. The new building, known as the Freshman Academy Building, is now officially open, completed. Teachers are starting to move in, and it's no longer limited to the Freshman Academy. It's actually open for all grade levels. And we decided to talk about our goals with you guys, so we've decided to do more fundraisers that are more like grade, so all grades are welcome to join, as well as obtain funding for like maintenance and just stuff, bathrooms, etcetera things, to just help out the school. And it's a better way to get more students involved, especially with all grades, rather than class officers doing it just for the class. It's just been the whole scheme in general. That's what we plan on doing in our upcoming year. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
There. The Board of Education accepted May 2018 Operating Results Analysis General Fund 18-84. Seconded by Mrs. Cooper. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. That here. No, just a quick. This is the board. We think right now, based on projections, we're closing the black as typically as our main goal. It's been a run this year, to say the least, with grants and all things. We had some, you know, high sub-usage across the board. We're still paying ourselves in this day. It's just, we're not close yet to trying to make some projections there. We did see a little uptick in health, and actually at the end of the week last week, we had pretty poor in this one week. But overall, we're in close here. It's not a... Thank you. And plus we like... You ruined the whole ambiance. Well, thank you, Joe. Anybody else have anything? Alright, there are none. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries?
Alright, the Board of Education accepted May 2018 Operating Results Analysis Grants Projects 18-85.
Seconded by Mrs. Wallnarrow. Any discussion?
All five of you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries?
Alright, the Board of Education approved the amendment to the SEDEXO Management Agreement 18-86.
Seconded by Mrs. Cooper. Do we have any discussion? Joe, can you just kindly walk us through it? Standard contract extension with SEDEXO that we do every year, required by state statute. It follows the same guidelines as the original bid process that's done, but that is coming for the board at each, at each of the one year of the agreement. It's a five-year contract every year that is updated from summer forward.
Could you give an overview to the new members as far as the actual SEDEXO contract and kind of how it works in terms of, you know, financial opposition responsibility to the board?
There is a guarantee that SEDEXO's placement program has a stop-loss guarantee. The board cannot suffer a deficit. We'll come back to Board of Education. SEDEXO's a managing company. You have a unionized force, which are Board of Education employees, in the lunch program. Lunch program itself sits in its own enterprise or operational fund, where it sends approximately $5.5 million that flows through that fund to pay all the pieces of SEDEXO's contract, your labor, all your food, all the PC data. It's a self-contained operation. In years past, there was issues with deficits. Thankfully, we are running year zero, which is where the board gives them not-for-profit borrowing, so it's regular it should be. You will see, the next motion is obviously the increase in the nickel. That is state mandate and also an offset food and labor, the grease system falling. Mr. Johnson?
Joe, what I'd like to do is ask for next year, you can have an accounting chart, your so-called enterprise funds. So, it's been a number of years since we've seen each other, and we have that.
Well, just as you're on point, that also falls under audit. The auditors do think the lunch program is part of our overall conference charter that starts in the fall three days. So...
Maybe next year you can take results from the current year.
Yeah, I'll bring the audit, and then we won't talk until it's done. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries?
Alright, the Board of Education approved an increase of five cents to lunch prices for the 2018-2019 school year 18-87.
Seconded by Mrs. Wallnarrow. Any discussion? And then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries?
The Board of Education implemented the findings of the Finance Committee to effect an increase of 2.5% and approved a one-year extension to the superintendent's contract for 2018-2019.
Seconded by Mrs. Cooper. Any discussion? And then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair opposes? Reopposed? Motion carries?
Formos Santos? Patrick Johnston? And Rachel Charleston? Motion carries seven. Thank you.
Thank you. And final? No submissions on that, right? No, seventy-three.
For the last one, I'm gonna add just the sentence at the end that we discussed in the previous meeting, just for occasion purposes. Alright, the Board of Education implemented the findings of the Finance Committee to effect an increase to all exempt staff 2.5% with adjustment to health and welfare benefits as described, and adjustment to duration of contracts where appropriate, not including the superintendent who has a separate contract.
Motion made second? Seconded by Mrs. Cholcinsky. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One opposition? Any extensions?
Extension.
One extension. Motion carries eight, one and one. Okay. Superintendent's report.
Let's start with Dee. Update on lunch program in our school four weeks.
Yes, we, we did bid awards. Two weeks of bid openings were a good distance to Board of Education. They pledged a projected cost of $1,090,000. Now the portables, especially the work at Shelter Rock, came in at $99,000 for all eight classes. So, a big win there. The second, the closest thereafter was 1.16, so definitely wide margin there on bid. Everything came in expect prior to the reviews and the report. City Board Awards next Wednesday. In conversation with them so far, we have had discussions around timeline for the portables. We were concerned that it's already clearly late into the, I feel like late into the summer already. There was a proposal made, possibly speed up the process, if we were willing to set run and plant down south all the weekend. There's a few weekends that the portables built. We speed up the installation by about six weeks, which is significant. Cost about $20,000. I bring that to the board for consideration. I think the cost was, we clearly had the portables actually in place for the start of school. It'd be on site and then make a final connection on the actual connector. So I'd say the board should be one week away if the morning kicks around. The other option is a lot later in the school year, we could not, later in October, I should say, we just give a cram.
say, we just give a crane on site, you got a lot more apparatus to move around. So this, I think, gain six weeks on production schedule, I think is worth it. It's discussion at the city as well, our city bonding and all sorts of things. But I do feel we gave the center a version of the project, plus we did come in, you know, well, full of process as well, so I think this is approved, this is kind of, at least act on this. I'm bringing you guys some information why you want to make a sense. I'd say a nod or two, so... Good to review the A.
Great idea.
Anything on the budget, Joe?
No new updates, since that's no change, the state, the state projections are what they are, there's no change there, we've got our alliances, your grant, which is going to come, unfortunately soon. Sorry, like I said, we, as you're saying, it was a complicated year. My six years, complicated both sides of the books, and you've got a lot of loopholes and a lot of grants, you've got state funding, Fed worry, the college and stuff, so, you know, there are mistakes, but it's not, it was not a simple process.
They're on the SEDEXO panel directors position?
Yes, so thank you to those of you who served on interview committees, okay, we've done a lot of them, that's right. We just finalized two, and you all got the press release and the announcement. The first is the Assistant Superintendent of School and District Development, in terms of having a wall. And we are excited to have him, he was actually in the district today, just wanting to help with some additional hiring that we're doing, to do some transition with Dr. Glass, so we're excited to have him on board, and he'll be here towards the end of July, since he leaves his current position. The second position, the Director of Instruction and Assessment, went to Cara Casavero, who many of you have seen at these meetings, and she will be assuming that position essentially, but we're hoping she'll work both jobs for final, starting July one, because she's going to transition to her role, which then leaves her position vacant. So the, let the domino effect begin, we are looking for her replacement, many of you may also be aware that Dr. Ross Valley is leading us, so we're also looking for his replacement, a couple other key administrators, who will not invoke the interview panel process, but will be important nonetheless, and they will be filled by people that you will see at SEDEXO meetings to come and talk to about what they do. So those were two really good ones that we're happy to have behind us and we're excited about the team. The other that is, yeah, the other position that we're working on right now is the Shelter Rock Principal Position, and Mrs. Cooper has done some extra double duty on that one with us. We're going to do some final rounds of interviews on Friday, so hopefully we'll have something to do by email via Friday early next week. So that will conclude sort of your role in those senior level administrator positions, we hope that will be one of those. And we continue to fill now mainline staffing positions. We're doing real well with some of our shortage area teaching positions, we're really filling those in pretty quickly, which is giving us all a big sigh of relief. And we're continuing to fill the remainder of now, we're trying to get it all in in the next couple of weeks, so before our administrators leave. So that's kind of the update. Summer school starts on Monday, so we're trying to make sure that we're in place for that to, a quick turnaround this year.
Summer schools will be three buildings.
Yes, summer schools are going to be three buildings, which is new for us this year, so we're expecting some bumps in the road for sure. It's allowed us to stay a little bit, I think, on transportation and economies of scale, but it's definitely been causing some, a little bit of bumpiness for the kids that are used to going to their home schools and for the teachers who were used to teaching in their home schools.
Where are the three schools at?
Uh, it's, uh...
Broadview, H town, and...
And special ed summer schools at AIS, yeah.
What's the normal time in between the end of school and the start of...
Couple weeks.
Yeah, usually two weeks.
Yeah, so we had to do a little fast mover and trying to keep our teachers feeling comfortable with the transition to a turnaround to. And it has, I will say, it's impact on the hiring, because not a lot of teachers want to roll ready to the new summer plan and then come back and go right back to school. Couple challenges. Yeah, the, the preschools? Yeah, sure. Excellent.
Those who had graduation, thank you for being there. A bit to a little of them, and this is the first one, and Dan Barry too, the last one. I think you all can be something graduates, these things become an event for yourselves. Young people are respectful, and the erosion of really positive. It was a great day for it, wasn't it, Howard? To sit there and to be really focused on the speeches and to give everybody respect, that was very tough. I feel Danny did a great job. It's about it, it's all I got.
I could just, um, I had the pleasure of going to most of the moving up ceremonies, graduations, and I, you know, when I go with Dr. Sasso, who is the most popular, very respected, I went to the ACE graduation. I was going to want to mention, some of the stories that these kids were telling, where they came from and where they're going, was just incredible. One kid in particular, he cried the whole time he spoke, the rest of us cried as well. He talked about the most difficult point in his life was when he was homeless, and yet he was still attending the school. And he didn't have money for food, at night, for dinner, or for the weekends, and the teachers would buy him gift cards, more than $5, because they knew he didn't have it, or they would pack lunch for him for the weekends so that he could have something. And at each one of these graduations, I was very impressed with the kids, but continued to grow my appreciation toward the staff members, teachers, administrators, and people who do the work that you do. Because, you know, a little life impact, you know, some of us who work in the business world, who maybe just deal with numbers and move things around, you can always get to a solution. But if you're dealing with lives, any little thing that you do will impact that life in such a big way. There's one guy in particular who said that, there were two things to him, you know, speaking to God, and the teachers at his, that was just, it was moving, and afterwards I went, I got to speak, they asked me to speak, I just congratulated them, tapped the board, told them that they were a success, and I told this kid, you are a success, and he cried, I stopped talking, I was, I cried too. But I was just very impressed with the organization, with the admiration that these teachers have, and how much they get, it's always one of those.
Can't resist a teacher at the moment. Many times during the budget season, people throw in and say, no, let's take a look at AICU's better than this. It's a culture and environment of its own, and the youngsters there, it's not a being nothing about their cognitive ability or any of that, but their pathway, their life pathway, are such that it just, they cannot exist at Harvard. They go there, they feel like a family constellation, if some of those teachers are there during the weekends, they do things that people dream about positions would do. You can't fake that, you know? And one of our arguments with the state is that they consider that a family school. You listen to that and tell them, so, you know, and the state has recognized the work that the teachers do, their, with their metrics and how they measure success, it just doesn't do it, doesn't cut it for the purpose of that school. And those youngsters after years, they have the pathway, they have some of the college management return to us as our principal, you know, we maybe have a lot of success even though they didn't want to show up, but the hardship of the school. So I keep saying during the budget season, it's not a place you want to go, but it is a special place. We'd like to see it expand a little, and they're working on that, there's good stuff up there, and they've done some things the last two years for career gap, but I haven't seen any shit from the rest company yet, but those stories are really what that school is about. Thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you for all the hard work. Got to, anybody else want to... Okay, Chairperson's report, we have two items. One, we received a, Dr. Cosgrove, they sent one to me, to a letter from the Connecticut State Board of Education with the resolution to add the extra day, nine to zero, they voted in favor of making it 181 days next year, so I don't know if we need that in the record or... Are we certain? Easy, we don't want that. Okay.
Can we, you know, do, can we write to the state? I mean, is there anything we can do to advocate in this context?
Joe, send them through.
We got it, Mark. I'm good at that. I think they're gonna, they're, they're breaking the check, they're... Okay.
The other school that had a makeup day was Richard, and that's because I think they started their seniors one day away, and they had the same results there. When I walked away from you real quick, they think there's a standard, and it's not so much, because you know what's going on last few days at school, it's not that it's so sacred. They don't want to walk away from one, that, that would, I mean, 190 days, and if we walk away from that, and the 700, he may not succeed. We do have that, by the way, I did send the commissioner here when you approve the calendar, so they have the evidence that you've done that.
Free queries. And...
Is that on camera?
Moving on to, to much more important things at hand, we have a gift, we have what the people here for, Dr. Duras.
Get to take your name, bud. Joe, come on up here.
It's spelled wrong.
Handmade by Bill Black, right?
I just have to say before anything, you got to do anything, I had this conversation with Farley at my, 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 and, and I've had this with many of the veteran workers, I'm sure this will be one of them, that I just have so much respect and admiration. We had paid you what we're doing, and I believe we all feel like it's calling, and so we're here for that reason. It was a compensated, I'm only the night is this, Sally, you all know, and just do this for us. And so I've said it so many times how much I have, such great admiration, we're so thrilled to be here, so, one person standing ovation, happy to have you.
Thank you. Thanks, Gary, you're all so thoughtful. Yes, July 11.
Time is flexible, if that matters.
Yeah, July 11. We need six...
If that matters.
We need six four members for the, for that hearing, do we have any?
Earlier. At which part, I didn't know, I was thinking about people who work, so I was, I just need six.
I just need six.
I just need six.
And you have six? Right now, right now, yes, but that's something to change.
We gotta have seven.
How many, what time is it? So right now, he said four, if you want to try to do it, I don't know, a game page or these people do do it earlier?
If it's four, I can do it.
It's 4:30.
Four, 4:30, you need? I wish for me to...
So if I did, I guess maybe I'll do a comment out, what, five o'clock later? It doesn't matter for me, whatever time you decide. So that's one, or evening, or evening, Joe, but four o'clock, I can't do four o'clock, I can do morning or evening.
What time do you evening?
Later from, after four is good for me.
I mean, I can do later, I just can't do...
Whatever it takes us to get to six.
Mister, can I leave that?
Anytime.
And yes, right now, but something's changed. So how many, how many do we have?
So right now, at four o'clock or later, I have Farley, Kathy, Jeanne Ali, Patrick, Holly, Cooper, at six?
Six.
But a couple of waitovers.
Yeah, and then, and what time would you need if we had a minute?
Six. Later, later at night?
Yeah, like five. So if we went to, if we went to five o'clock, we could get...
We could get a few minutes.
Six, I'd be able to do it.
We went to six o'clock?
You're running the hospital, forgot about that.
I could get Rachel and Fred if I went to six? And everybody else, then we'd raise their hand?
I'll be in for six too.
So we do six o'clock and we've got an overabundance, and...
Perfect.
That's better than not, no?
Okay.
And over here, and Mr. Mooney would be...
So this is a grievance, and it is over an involuntary transfer. A B teacher who has questioned his involuntary transfer, and the contract provides that it goes straight to your level, you know, ASCO.
Double check.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Bosie's in New York?
I'm going to be very tired, I'm going to be flying back from San Francisco on a 10.
Well, if we have this, maybe...
Stay ill. Right, so, um... Yeah, we, the board reports, communications, nobody has anything further to say? Can I get a motion to move to executive? Oh, we don't have executive session, okay, we had...
No, nothing to... Well, I will just tell you in the 30 seconds, we did, we've done, we've started three contacts. So we've started secretaries, and today we started school lunch, and we started safety agreements. And we have not yet started administrators, which is on, and I can't feel like everyone of you are on that one. That one's going to be in the summer and it's going to go zero to 100, it's got to be done by the fall, so everyone misses September. So it will be busy. If anybody remembers anyone who's not, there's other names on this list.
Already done enough.
I know, you have to balance strikes.
Well, we may send up, send up a player and just say we need a decent person for that.
All right, so hearing nothing else, we're going to accept Mrs. Molinaro's motion to adjourn. We have a second by Mr. Matrina, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great summers, we got that. Well, we're getting, we're getting a couple of days more than the summer school teachers. That's probably, especially, especially when you have to do it during school.